Twenty first, twenty nineteen, call them into order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On and on. Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed?
None.
Commissioner, committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Well, EMS week. Fire station number two grand opening tomorrow, four o'clock. Get the stormwater management advisory meeting Thursday morning, eight AM. And then holiday Monday, so about it.
A RPC executive meeting tomorrow at eleven thirty. Think there's also a sleep board meeting at the same time. I think that's about, that's it.
Got a cap region board meeting tonight. Tomorrow, yeah, I'm gonna try to be at the fire station number two. Columbia Regional Airport's having a meeting which I can't make, so I don't know if either one of you can. Thursday mornings, Legend Spank Board. Thursday evening is Cole County Republican Club barbecue. Fridays, the ribbon cutting at Brooks Park at noon. Right, Larry? Ribbon cutting Friday at Brooks Park. Had the air show down, but that...
Friday is?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I missed it too, I'm sorry. I won't make that.
Yeah, and then Monday, we've got a Memorial Day parade at ten AM, so. That's all.
I don't know why my calendar wasn't showing this, but I got a Roden Bridge advisory meeting at eight o'clock Thursday morning, so.
Is Matt here yet?
He should be close.
Yeah, we'll, we'll hold off on that, okay. We will, bids and contracts then. Twenty nineteen dash CP twenty, signing of cooperative purchase agreements for Public Works printers.
This is for, obviously, the new printer for Public Works. I did check it against the Sourcewell contract, and it's actually better pricing than their master list, so it's a pretty good deal. Five thousand, four hundred, twelve dollars and ninety-three cents for the machine. And then it's on a per copy basis at point oh oh eight for black and white, point oh five one for print. The agreement to sign that Jill's looked over.
This was in our budget, we'd planned for it this year.
Here's Matt.
It's holding in the computer room to replace old, probably a bit of, hold one back from my supervisor's office and move it to nerd down, so. It basically has the same operation as their other one.
Nice job, Jeff, that, that's ridiculous.
Okay. Get, get discount.
I'd say, I move that we sign the purchase agreement with Marco.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Might take a look at that. One sheet there, Jeff.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna deviate a little bit since I saw our chief come in. This is Emergency Medical Services Week, and we have a...
The price of like two...
Proclamation to present to you, so.
Well, I wasn't worried about anything besides the bottom price.
Well, I know, but I just, I'm interested to see what the discount is.
Diamonds, seventy-five percent off this week.
I'm gonna stand up here.
Like all these kids who get these things are getting it.
Graduation week.
Graduation week.
Okay. Whereas, Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service. And whereas, the members of Emergency Medical Services teams, including Cole County EMS, are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergent medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, law enforcement officers, emergency nurses, physicians, trained members of the public. Whereas, the members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. Whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services provided by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, the Cole County Commission, in recognition of this event, does hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, twenty, we got typo here, twenty nineteen, it says twenty sixteen, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Dated twentieth, the day of May, the year of our Lord, twenty nineteen.
We appreciate it, sir.
Okay.
You get a picture?
Yes, yeah, we did a picture.
For sure. He wants to shake your hand.
Well, you got, you got, you got, this is yours, so, yeah.
Come stay in front of me, Michelle, you're fine.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you very much for everything you do.
I gotta give my...
You bet. Yep, we oughta see you later. Save me a hot dog or something.
Had to get there before, right?
Everyone's welcome to join us, we've got a barbecue going on this afternoon from eleven to about, we're gonna cut it short about two, just because of the storms that are coming today, so everyone's welcome to come out, it's appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
No, thanks.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay. New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
So moved.
Do you have one on it for me?
Yes.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying.
Okay. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number five.
This is for a hundred and six thousand, eight hundred, fifty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. This is the law enforcement fund, and this is that Mustang asset forfeiture. I do need action today.
Are we getting that money, or?
Yes, getting it and spending it.
Okay. So what are we spending it on?
It won't all be spent, uh, right away, it's, uh, so the asset forfeiture used to go directly to the Mustang group. The beds are now requiring that it runs through another agency that you are going to state that it runs through.
So it's just a pass-through, then? And is that, is there two Mustang groups? Is there the sheriff's group, and then the police department also has a group, or?
I think it's the same group, there's someone from the police department, Cowalway County.
It's a mid-Missouri.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Alright, thank you. I move that we sign court order number five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number six.
This is for four thousand, eight hundred, fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. This is for, actually, an insurance claim, a deer hit on one of the hands. So we got the money and we have to pay bills, so.
I move that we approve and sign court order number six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion of youth specialists for the Pringer Family Center.
So when we proposed some changes to the salary schedule in the budget, we created a youth specialist one and a youth specialist two, with the idea that the youth specialist two would have a degree. I did not ask Michael in the process how many people he currently had in school that would be meeting that standard during the year. He has one right now.
One that has graduated.
Right, in May.
Yes.
And then possibly another one that will be December.
December or, or May.
Okay. So we were wondering if we could make it to where, once they got that degree, they moved from a one to a two. It's about two thousand dollars additional money to the person for getting that degree.
And looking at our vacancies that we've had this year, we've got the money within our full-time position account in order to cover that for this year.
So we're hiring one new one, right?
No, no, they're already there, they got a degree. They were working as a program specialist one, and they got a degree. Those that have gotten degrees, we've maintained much longer at our place, and at this time, we have five full-time youth specialists with degrees now. So it also helps us out in the quality of care, too, and the stability within our programming.
I thought from some vacancies that you probably had enough money in this year's budget...
Yes.
To do this for this year, but then, obviously, it'd be a budgetary impact the next year if someone...
Yes.
So that's, is that a, that's not a position that we normally have, is that right? I mean, do we have a youth specialist two?
So they're both ones right now, and yes, we have a youth specialist two. It's just, we didn't, we didn't follow through with the question of, did he have anyone that was a one that would get that degree and become a two?
Okay.
I, I think we want the most qualified people you can have, so I think in this case, having degrees is probably gonna make them better to work with.
And then obviously, with some retirements and stuff, it, it may be a budget-neutral deal going forward even in next year from cost savings as far as hiring new people.
Yes. You're, you're correct with that, yes.
So we eliminated something?
No, we didn't eliminate anything.
So then how are we saving them? If you're adding money, add two thousand to next.
As you bring in, we have a starting place for positions, and if the current person's in that position at a higher rate, we would, we would not bring in a new person at that high rate, but at the beginning rate that the commission agreed upon on the various salary scales that we had identified back in the budget development this past year.
If nobody leaves next year, then it's just gonna add to it. It won't be budget neutral next year, so.
Whereas, obviously, as you, I mean, we have one person that's gonna retire here in the next couple of weeks. Anyway, as you hire new people in, it's starting position, it's gonna offset that cost going forward for next year. And then some of the vacancies that we've had this year, I mean, there's extra money in that budget line for, to absorb the two thousand.
If you stick to the grid.
Right.
And pretty much, we've been sticking to our, we've been sticking to our grid, though, as of the starting.
No, this isn't, this is making an exception, 'cause now we're gonna have a...
No, no.
Yes, it is, we're going to a youth specialist two, and we only budgeted one. Michael, I don't disagree that they need to be paid, and having a degree is what we want over there. I'm not arguing that part. Our, I will argue for you on that part. My part, I'm just arguing is the grid again, we budgeted for a youth specialist one, a youth specialist two, then that's all we should have. If they get a degree, then they're an overqualified youth specialist one. Otherwise, every office can do that. We can have the clerk's office come over and say, well, it's also got a degree, now we want them to be a clerk three. And if we only have budgeted for clerk one, two, and three, then that's positions we need to fill, so. I'm not gonna beat the dead horse, I do this on each one, so that's, I just wanted to bring it up again, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see your argument, understand where you're going from, but I mean, obviously, if you're, if you're in a specialized field, and, and you get a degree, and if we want to retain you as an employee, we need to offer you something. Otherwise, you're gonna go somewhere else and get more money. And, and then we're right back in the situation of not having enough staff to do the work that we need done. And so, I mean, it's a double-edged sword, I, I get what you're saying, I mean, we only need a youth specialist one, but we don't have people knocking at our door looking for a job that are qualified.
And I don't think your numbers are gonna decline, so, I don't know.
I mean, I'm, I'm good with it, so, you need action from us today, or?
Yes.
So we're actually gonna change the grid, where you asked two youth specialists two.
I set the paper up, yes.
Yeah, I guess, yes.
Yes, you got it.
So with it, so to Jeff's point, will it be on the grid, will it be, um, or on the, I mean, you call it the grid, I mean, I would call it the flow chart, or the, whatever you wanna say. You know, will it be youth specialist one, size two, or what does that job duties require?
Well, so right now, it, there's two separate titles with two separate startings.
Right.
That's two thousand dollars difference.
Right. But what I'm asking is, is that, what is the job? I mean, in the flow chart of, of how, or?
That, that individual is responsible for the maintenance and oversight of the kids that we have in our care. We work three shifts, and they take them out on outings, they're responsible for their oversight, their, in regards to their phase work that they're involved in, and providing overall, overall supervision of the kids in the facility and outside the facility.
But so that job could be done by a youth specialist one or a youth specialist two?
Right, but the thing is, though, by those that have a degree and offering that additional pay, I've been able to maintain folks longer, their longevity is much longer at that level, and, 'cause right now, I have six full-time youth specialists, and the tenure of those six right now have been over three years, where my program specialist ones, even though they may be part-time, we're averaging eight months, 'cause they're in and out, in and out.
Way it sounds, they just need more money to keep them. It's not anything about them having a degree, we can have somebody go to State Tech and learn how to drive a, from big equipment. Do we get to pay them more at Public Works? I mean, Larry's sitting here listening to this right now, I can't wait to see next year's budget needs. They're gonna come after us, man, it's got guys with degrees.
Well, I think it's the same situation as a maintenance worker versus an equipment operator at Roden Bridge, you know? Maybe we should be budgeting them all as the higher one, but you don't get there unless you've met those standards. Same thing with his equipment operators, they all start out as a maintenance worker, but once they've met those performance standards, then they move to an equipment operator automatically.
If we have equipment operator position available.
We've gone to budgeting them all as equipment operators.
Right, on the equipment operator, okay, that's right, we did go, 'cause we started them off at maintenance startup with. 'Cause to me, it don't sound like the job is any different, it's just our qualifications are different.
Right.
Okay, I beat the dead horse for nothing, we can move on.
Okay, I'm, I'm going with the two, so.
What are you paying to keep them?
Yeah, I'm...
I just always get to pick on the grid.
So obviously, we, we want, we would like a youth specialist two...
Correct.
That we could hire someone in at a youth specialist one, and pay them less if they don't have a degree.
That is correct.
And aren't as qualified.
Yes.
Okay. I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Just pay for them, is that all we need?
I think he sent it up, it should, it should be in your folder.
Alright, I'll find it somewhere.
I don't know where it is.
I hid it from you all.
Okay. Discussion of copy machine in Circuit Court.
Oh, can, can I wait till Perry Rogers gets here, she has all of them.
Oh, I guess so.
Oh, no.
Okay.
They'll get back up.
Discussion of environmental inspection software.
People are late on everybody now.
Thank you.
Hey, one thirty, here we go.
Yeah, you may or may not know...
No, we got, we got...
That we do have an electronic software system that we attempt to use to do inspections out in the field. This was, agreement was signed by the previous director, and during my tenure, we've been fighting with Decade, trying to get it to function pretty much the whole time. We've never renewed a contract, but yet they're saying that our contract is up in June, June eighteenth. So we wanna use this opportunity to look at other options, because we're not happy with the software. So Brandon has done research on other providers, so that Decade, Essella, is what we currently use. And Brian is here because he knows more about the server, and the money comes out of his budget for the hosting fee. So we would like to move to the Jolt software, there is no contract with it, it's app-based, it's a lot cheaper cost, we can have unlimited users. And with any of the systems, we need to upgrade our tablets, so that's the bottom part of the chart is, it's time to upgrade our tablets, so our proposal is to go with Jolt and to buy the iPads, either from Walmart, 'cause it's cheapest, or if Brian prefers to go through CDW, because that's where he has the, the contract to buy stuff, so. That's what we would like to do, and the savings that we will have from not paying for Decade pays for the tablets.
Agreed.
What about those?
Agreed.
Did you ever check the server?
So, so right now, we own, we're in a, kind of a major push to get all the two thousand and eight servers upgraded by two thousand and twenty, due to the obsolescence of the operating system and non-support. Decade resides on that server, so it's the only thing that's keeping me from upgrading that server right now is the fact they're still using Decade, so I'm in a hundred percent agreement, we need to do something different there.
So what software were you gonna go with, I'm sorry?
Jolt.
Jolt. And have you tried it out, um?
Brandon's been playing with it with his personal tablet, because we don't have tablets that it will work on at the health department. So he's been using his personal one to try it out, and he's showed it to the other guys, and there's some other counties that are using it correctly, yeah, correct, so he's talked to them about it.
And if I could provide some background from the inspection side of things, when I was hired on here approximately four years ago, Decade was in place. Yet we, when I showed up, we were using the paper, paper forms similar to the state, because the Decade program was in, it needed repairs, not all features were working. At the time, they were working with the Decade representative to correct those issues, but being on California time, and being a larger company, the consistency of customer service was not there, and rarely would we talk to the same individual who knew who we were and what we were doing, what we're using their system for. There are many features on Decade that would've been beneficial to use at that time, but were not fully functional. One major area was the reports, so we could provide the numbers to you, the commission, to show the work that we do every year, so.
Put the inspections on the website.
Yes, and that, that's something the public has shown interest in, they'd like to see our work, what we do. Some of these food establishments and childcare facilities we go to, they wanna see what we look at, when we were there, what we find. Currently not able to do that with Decade. We can find a way with Jolt or other systems to get that onto our website. Like I said, over the four years I've been here, we have found ways to make Decade work, but it's not fully functional. We have two employees that cannot use the system to its full use. So currently, you have myself using Decade for all inspections, others have to go back to paper form. And that, that doesn't even cover the code enforcement complaint system or the onsite wastewater treatment systems. So we're looking for is a system that, yes, is more cost efficient, but also helps us be more organized, prepared, and we can present our work more quickly.
So the Jolt software will be able to be used besides onsite inspections as well?
For all, all day, not cherry and onsite codes.
And as a backup, if the tablet, for whatever reason, I didn't charge it last night, I have the capability on my phone to continue on during the inspection.
Okay.
And we have ability to, but, you know, Brandon has the ability to make changes to those systems, instead of it having to get programmed out by Decade, have their people make the changes, we can make our own changes. That's a pretty significant part.
We have complete control, we can decide when we no longer want to be customers, we can adjust our pricing. There are no contracts, but if we decided to go this route, we could pay annually at a reduced rate, or continue to pay monthly if, if we choose to.
I'm fine, well, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm surprised that the lowest one is the one that y'all picked. Well, it never works that way, so I was kinda scared when I saw those prices, I said, that's not gonna be the one you're picking.
Sir, I, I come from Osage County, sir.
There's no contract, which...
Limited budget, Osage County.
Lowest of best, that's what I would say, lowest of best.
Those usually don't go together.
So then as far as the tablets, are those bought on state contractor?
Well, they're off a contract, off from CDW, it's like a Sourcewell contract.
So if we buy them from CDW, they're a little bit more expensive, but that's the contract.
So we don't have to go and bid them or anything, then?
No, they're still only twenty-two hundred dollars.
Should be cooperative procurement, I would think.
Okay.
So we will have to work with Jill to get a letter for Decade to terminate the contract, even though we've, we've never signed one in the last...
Would you need to terminate your contract if you don't have one?
That's what they were saying, that we need a letter. And I was like, they were wanting us to renew the contract, I said, we're not gonna renew, so then they want this letter, so we'll, we'll look at the email.
What are they gonna do to you?
I'm not sure.
I'm happy to help, I'm just, I'm...
Well, that's why we, you know, that's why I said that to you, is I don't know if we really have to do anything.
He's, I, I would really do it right now, examples, but, so if they wanna send us something to sign, I don't care, one way or the other, we'll work it out.
June of two thousand and thirteen, so.
Can see that, I don't see a signature on that or anything, I mean, ain't nothing issue, so.
Okay.
The clerk would probably...
This in MetSmart happened before, so.
The clerk, clerk keeps copies of all this stuff.
Alright, do we need action today, or?
What's that? They're supposed to, that's what they're supposed to do.
If y'all find a contract, let us know, 'cause then we can, we can agree to terminate it. I'm not gonna vote to terminate something if we don't have it.
Okay, we'll see what we have to do.
And it terminates, I think what you would do is vote to renew it, and termination's gonna happen. So if you do nothing, it's still gonna happen.
If it's already terminated by the day.
Well, is there something in there that makes it automatically renew?
So we'll figure that out, send her a letter if we need one.
Okay.
So you're good with Jolt, and you're good with buying the tablets?
Yes.
Do you prefer, do you care where, CDW?
As long as it's, I mean, I don't care if it's Walmart or CDW, I mean, as long as it's the same tablet.
They're just iPads, so.
Right, well.
But would this...
iPads aren't the same.
We'll, we'll have our IT department help us.
There you go. The two of them, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Good job.
Okay. Are you ready, Donnell? Okay, we'll go back to discussion of copy machine and Circuit Court.
I'm on the legendary, she's the one who did all the working to get the fitting done.
So just a little background, previously, we used to lease the copiers over in the Circuit Clerk's office. Donnell approached me during the budget and said that we were out of our lease, and we're looking at doing a new lease, and I brought up the discussion about possibly purchasing those copiers instead of leasing them, and that's kind of where we're at, is they got quotes and things for the difference between leasing and purchasing.
Yes. So the total price for replacing all of them per the lease is just what our cost is per copy, and it's point zero zero six seven, and the parts, labor, and the toner are all excluded from that. And we just provide our own staples and paper. The machines themselves are thirteen eighty-six. He says per quarter, but I don't think that's right. He says per quarter, but I don't think that's right. Sorry. Okay, here we go. Per lease on the smallest ones are eighty-four ninety, thirty-nine a machine. The medium ones, we had some with finishers, external finishers, and some without external finishers. So they run about a four dollar difference between those for right at a hundred bucks per machine. And then the biggest machine we have is a hundred and seven, a hundred and sixty-one dollars. So the total of that is a per month, and I, I apologize because I had it on my other paper and I don't know where that is. That's, no, that's the eight. There's three of the, three of these, three of these, three of these, you have it. Sorry. It's okay. So three is the first three.
Buy one now instead of leasing them.
Instead of leasing them?
Yeah, okay.
The buyout is, or to actually purchase all of them is one price is like around thirty-eight thousand. It's on this page.
You buy the used ones that we've been leasing?
No, no, we, we own those. Will.
What do you mean, we own them? I thought we leased them.
My totals.
We no longer have a contract, we no longer owe any money on the copiers that we have now. We just have the copier fee contract, which is every time a scanned image goes in, we have to pay for that.
Right.
So we're paying about a hundred and some dollars now per month and we have been since last year, I think. Last year, May, I think, so it's been about a year that we haven't had a lease, lease. The copiers are deteriorating, they need to be replaced. Did you have the final cost?
Yeah, I did, I don't know where these papers went that had the final cost on them.
It, it was thirty-seven or something. It was around thirty-eight thousand dollars total for, total payout, other than looking at around thirteen thousand, like thirteen thousand five hundred per year for the next four or five years.
Yeah, so a thousand two fifteen per month.
The lease.
On the lease, and then the, around the thirty-eight to buy them out.
For five years?
Yeah. Plus we have a buyout, they're giving us a credit, they would give us a credit on, for machines that we have now.
Their buyout was not that spectacular. It was a hundred dollars per little copier, two hundred dollars per the medium sized copier, and two hundred fifty dollars for the very large copier.
So when we say lease, we're just paying, it's not really a lease, we're just paying for, per copy?
Well, it's also a monthly lease for the machine.
Right, it's a monthly, monthly lease to pay for the machine.
I thought we.
And then a copier contract on top of that.
So the thousand.
Is it lease to own or is it just lease?
It is lease to own.
Okay, so we do own the machines now?
Yes, correct.
I, I don't know, I'm totally confused.
So at the end of their lease, they had a buyout option, it's like a dollar or, I don't know what the dollar amount was, but they had a buyout option, they took that option, so we currently own the machines we have.
All of them or some of them?
I think all of them.
Then why is there still a lease?
We don't have a lease. What we're trying to do is we want to get new machines and either purchase them through a lease or purchase them outright. And it would be cheaper for the county to purchase them outright at thirty-eight thousand versus thirteen thousand per year for the next four to five years.
We have five machines that are already over two hundred fifty thousand copies on each one of them. And they are.
We've had them for six, seven years now, six years for sure.
We have at least one that needs to be serviced, I'd say every two to three weeks.
So we got multiple bids for the copier machines from?
We did go with another company and asked them, but they wouldn't configure to one machine. Right now, what we have is the ability to go in on the computer system and add fax numbers, people's email address and so forth. So all of the machines can be downloaded with that information at one time. Where the other contract, they were looking at having a mixture of different kinds of machines that wouldn't allow us to do that. Yep. This new one is actually going to be able to talk with our computer, so we could actually email people our copies.
So you can, and we can also be able to fax from our desktops.
From our desktops, which is pretty cool.
So Brian, have you, are you cognizant of, of what they're looking at or?
Yeah, yeah, they, Derek gave me a spreadsheet of what they were looking at and stuff like that, so. So I went through it and I looked at it as well, and I mean, everything they've said is dead on as far as like their, you know, their ability to configure things from basically a centralized location and stuff like that. And I think they like the fact it's a common user interface. That way you don't have to relearn, you know, different manufacturers and stuff like that. You went through, I went through, I looked at the copy counts on all the two oh ones and stuff like that. And so this is the spreadsheet that you gave me. And so like right now, the two oh ones, like the one's got three hundred thousand on it. And if you go through it, kind of like how you do with copiers, is you take a look at the amount of time they've had it and the amount of volume on it, and that's what gives you your average monthly usage, right? So those two oh ones are definitely in the, in the replace me mode. I mean, those evidently are used pretty heavily and stuff like that. They're larger volume machines, the volume counts aren't that high on them, but I think you use a ton of scanning, don't you? And stuff like that. So I went through and I looked at that as well. And the larger volume machines, they don't use the bulk of it for copying or printing, they must use it for scanning because the copy counts on those are pretty, pretty low. Because a lot of those bigger machines are actually rated to do like a hundred thousand a month or something like that. And their total count on the highest one's only three hundred and fourteen thousand. So, so that's kind of what I went through and I found. And then the cost per copy is really good, it's competitive rate. The price on the machines are, I mean, I went ahead and called another sources to kind of bounce, you know, get a, an off the cuff quote. And it's significantly lower than what they, they could offer, so.
So we didn't talk about this at budget time, is that just, did you know lots of leases up this year on them?
We did.
Was up last year.
Last year.
Yeah, we did put the lease amount in there to lease new machines, but we did not talk about the purchase during the budget.
Okay, so we knew the lease was coming up, we put money into leasing, but not enough to cut buying all of them.
Correct.
So can we take the ones, maybe that've been used for scanning, have them over to be used for copiers and stagger them so we're not buying all of them at one time?
Well, my only thoughts on that is, is that the two oh ones are more like desktop and the bigger ones are, I mean, right now you need a, to me, you need a desktop to replace a desktop because that's what the space available is.
Then we're looking at having to buy ones mid, midterm as far as if we're leasing them. I mean, I think it's a great idea that we go and replace them all at one time. We have the ability to, like I said, the user interface with it so that they're all the same, not different models from different years. So you can, I can go in room four hundred and I can be the same one, same model, same user interface in room two of six.
Well, I mean, either way, it's thirty-eight thousand dollars, whether it's all in one year or you stagger it three years, I just stagger it, seems like it makes it easier to budget, not worry about that hit every third year or fifth year.
The average life of a copier, Brian, is about five, seven?
Well, it, it kind of goes, so most manufacturers will say about seven years is when they quit making parts for them and things like that. But, you know, that's also predicated on how many service calls you're getting and stuff like that, the performance of the machine. So like on your higher end machines, those are actually rated at about a million, a million and a half, things like that. But, you know, if it's not, if it's not running very well, then it doesn't matter what it's rated at, I mean, it's, it's done.
So the thirty-eight thousand, that include a service agreement to take care of them like you did with the lease?
Yeah, you're looking at outright purchase of around thirty-eight thousand plus, uh, cost per copy.
And that's what covers the, the service.
The supplies and the parts and.
Which we were paying anyway with the lease, correct?
Correct, well, with the copy contract. Either way you go, you have to pay that cost.
And that's what covers your service agreement, so they fix stuff for you even when it gets older, but. I'm not crazy about leases, I mean, I think it sounds like a good idea. I guess one of the questions we had was to, seems like there's a, a large number of copiers. And then do we need them all, can we eliminate some, do you have to have all of them?
Well, the problem is that we are so spread out, we need to have them all. We need to have one for each of the division clerks because we have attorneys and probation and parole officers and castle workers, they're making their copies in the clerk's, in the division clerk's office when they're there with the judge. And then ones we have in either one of the offices, like the big copier is primarily for our copy clerk so that she can print straight to that one when she's making a large volume of copies, which she does make a large volume of copies. I just kind of ran just her invoices, so this is just the ones that we have people pay for. It doesn't include the free ones that we give out to the federal government, the FBI, media. It doesn't include walk-ins because if they walk in and pay for it right then and there, it's usually put straight on the case and we don't invoice them for that. So our invoice numbers last year was about six thousand and eighty-five dollars. And if you equate that out to fifty cents per page, that's about two thousand two hundred copies. And so if you triple that, you're probably getting close to the number of copies that she's making, if not more. We're, I'm figuring between forty-five thousand and five, and fifty thousand copies a, a year is what she's making on, alone, on her own. Doesn't include what everybody else is doing. So we really don't have the.
We also have twelve offices.
Right. So in order to have one for each.
It'd be nice to have us all on one floor, one area, but that's not possible.
Okay.
Maybe in the future.
I'm still kind of confused on the service thing, so if we own them now and we keep them till the end of the year and maybe do the purchases next year, and we still have a service agreement with them?
The service agreement is off of the copies per, the, what is the cost, there's like a contract that you have to sign and they're giving us point zero zero six seven per image that's scanned or copied.
Okay, but that does not include maintenance.
That does, that's what includes the maintenance.
It does include maintenance?
That includes the maintenance and the toner. And that's, that is required, we have to pay for that for the service and so forth. So we have a copy contract that's separate from the lease or purchase.
I guess I don't see why we want to get rid of them unless they're just total dogs. Because if it's, you know, it's got medium life, it's still holding up, and then we have the service agreement and something breaks on it, they've got to kind of fix it, right? It's not costless, anything.
Sure, but we're down that one, we're waiting for them to come and service the, service the copier and it's happening more frequently.
I checked just to see how many I put in for May, and I, we have already put in four for May, and all four of them were work stoppages. So while it was down, that clerk had to be rotted somewhere else to print her copies out.
Is it all the same copier or is it four different?
No, it's four different copiers. Well, the seventy-five oh six had, a service call for the paper was jamming in the paper tray and the others were all the thirty-three fifty-twos. One of them was Julie's and one of them. Oh, Julie's and Rachel's. From Division Four and Division One, and then the big copier in, in two oh eight. And then Deanna's, which is the probation office, this is two oh one. And that's the one with the least amount of copies on it in the whole courthouse.
How much we got in budget this year for the, what is it, thirteen thousand?
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand.
Can I figure out what fifteen thousand dollars worth of copying machines we have that we want to replace this year and then do the other one next year? I think we got a service agreement on it, I mean, even if the brand knew, you can have something go wrong. Find one that are really at the end of their life?
Sorry, I lied, it's ten, ten-five is what we had in there for the lease.
Not if you stagger it out over three years, but.
Well, yeah, but that's for the whole year.
We haven't bought any, for, this is six years, they're six years old now. So we had them under contract for five years and for the last year, we have been under contract with the lease because we, we have paid them off as of last year, there's, all of them are six years old. So we're not looking to purchase them every three years, we're looking to purchase them every six years.
Yeah, I was looking at the leases, ten thousand, I was thinking it was fifteen to start with, but then you're wanting to buy them, we'd cost thirty-eight to buy them, so.
It's definitely a better deal to buy them outright than it is to lease them.
Right, I don't disagree with that at all. I was trying to stagger it a little bit. So we bought them all at the same time, I was thinking we bought some different ones different times.
If they're six years old, they're near the end of their life, so.
I foresee more and more service calls all the time.
Are they like dog years or what?
Uh huh. It's like dog years.
Six years old, they're eighty-five. I think that's all my questions, your witness.
Where were you on?
I still don't know where I'm at all yet.
Monday, May.
Yesterday.
May what, what year? I'm not sure. I plead the fifth, okay.
If you buy them all at one time, then you know how old all of them are.
Right.
You don't have to keep track of your kids' birthdays and stuff like that. But at the same time, it's a big chance, so. It's Brian's budget.
I'm sure he doesn't have that in there, he's probably already blown his budget and then some.
Either way, we'd just like to move forward either with the lease or, or the purchase.
In our opinion is, is we'd like to get away from the leases.
Yeah, I think so.
I'd just like some more information and I'm not sure which way I want to go yet, so. Jeff, I mean, I don't like a lease either, but.
Why were we leasing from a vehicle anyway?
We had a mixture of all different kinds whenever I came on. And I remember Debbie was the one who said, Donnell, can you do something about this? We got this lease with this one, we got this lease with that one. So we bid them out, which was a learning experience, but we bid them out and Rico was the best price.
I think at the time when we're trying to consolidate across the whole county and it just became impossible to do.
Yeah, because we had different contracts starting at different times, so.
And we're really hap- happy with the, with the copiers themselves. I have said, to be able to go and have to configure each separate copier with this list of faxes, this list of emails, to be able to do that online is, is streamlined, it's, it's very, very nice.
And right now I have to do every machine separately. And it's, you know, putting every county sheriff's office in there and all of the clerks.
To C's or?
Yeah, P and P offices.
The clerks themselves to scan some of them and then.
It's really hard to keep up with.
Well, it sounds, some of, some of the scanners, copiers are still good because they haven't been at use for copying very much. So maybe we can use them somewhere else too, and I don't know what's coming up needing to be replaced, but if they've just been used to scan, we might want to hold on to them.
There is a buyout option, they would buy them from us, so that would be something that we would need to know if we were going to have Rico purchase them as a buyback or we're gonna keep them.
Basically, they're giving us a hundred bucks to get rid of them, is what they're doing, right?
Basically.
Well, the big one, two fifty.
But I think that's like, Chris said, a little more information would help on that because if they're gonna give us a little bit for them.
And that's a little bit more than we get for, I mean, right now, most of the time, they do not sell on surplus property. We don't have departments that take them, so we're getting a dollar or five dollars possibly, or we're just throwing them away because people don't want them at the end of their life.
But if that one's just been used for scanning, I mean, y'all probably could use something like that at Public Works. I mean, if it, it's a good copier.
Kind of what you're, kind of what you're.
For a hundred bucks.
Kind of what you run into is, is the cost of, the cost of upkeep too.
It's that service contract, once they don't have a service contract with them, then you have to pay for them to be fixed, right?
If you put that on a truck to take it over to Public Works, hard to tell them what it is, far loose. Just saying.
All right, let's try to dump stuff somewhere.
And I'm not.
Public Works is a good one.
I'm not aware of any other departments that have requested, you know, additional copiers.
We're gonna just keep one of the small ones in the supervisor's office in two oh eight. She has an old Manolto, I think it's from the sixties, that she uses, it's horribly, horribly old.
It was given to us.
It's definitely before nineteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, that's just a backup for one that we have.
Yeah, it's not networked or anything like that. It's just standalone copier and she uses it for confidential stuff that other people shouldn't be seeing. So she needs that in her office to be able to make those copies.
So that one will be under no contract then?
Right.
Pretty much if it breaks, you throw it away.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's right.
You guys want that back on the agenda for next week?
Yeah, please. Yeah, just put it back on the agenda next week if you can get us some more information, so. Just general information for both sides, so...
I'm sorry, what, what information are you looking for?
Well, I mean, it'd be nice to have it all here in front of me, you know, what the costs are for the, as a state contract, you know, what those prices are per copy, you know, for the maintenance, what we're getting on the buyout.
All of that was included with the budget in regards to the lease information that was included in that. This contract is only good until when, Terry, the end of this month?
May thirtieth.
May thirtieth. It only gives us a thirty-day period. I can definitely get you the information and send it to you. Do you need me to be here at the next meeting to present it or if I just email it to you guys?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I just think, just whatever information you got there, so take a look at it.
So we can't get a service agreement to the end of the year on the existing copiers?
Sure you can.
Oh, because you put that in.
Yes, we are under a service agreement copier contract. That's what the copier contract fee is for. It's about a hundred and twenty bucks a month. It depends on how...
I thought you said that ends at the end of May.
This pricing is good until the end of May.
Right.
And then we have to get a little...
Okay, I'm sorry.
They'll only hold the price for the purchase for thirty days and then they'd have to re-quote it.
Right. Different equipment comes out and stuff, I'm sure, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think we can make a decision next week, one way or the other, so...
Again, do you want me to email that to you or do you want me to bring it to you?
Email would be fine.
Okay.
So, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
These are state contracts?
Yes, it's a state.
Okay.
Well...
They're on the state contract, but they're also on the municipal, local, there's a special one.
And nobody's having to bid it out because that could extend it a whole lot longer, right?
Yeah. So they could give us the prices under each, each one. And actually, the price they gave us was on the, the local municipal contract that they have.
Probably with the local contract or something like that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Okay. First reading of budget adjustment number seven.
Number seven. This is the one thousand eight hundred dollars. This was the health department's donation money that they received the last time. No action today. Sorry. We'll bring it up in two weeks.
Okay. First reading of budget adjustment number eight.
This was seventy-five hundred. Also the health department. It's four... Oh, it's a show me healthy women grant. No action today.
Okay. Do we have any other issues, anything else?
Did y'all get a bunch of letters about Missouri Supreme Court changes the rules on pretrial release without legislative oversight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why are we getting them? What do we...
Well, because I imagine that there's a lot of counties that are probably looking to tap into this five million dollars that they've appropriated for pretrial services. So I had a conversation with Richard Lee this morning. And so ours is done on a local level and it probably is done very efficiently. And once you start having oversight at the state level, it'll be a total waste of taxpayer dollars. So, I mean, obviously, one person could probably supervise the program or outsource it or something. But, I mean, I don't disagree with them, but, I mean, in our, I did send a response to one of them and then I saw all the others.
Yeah.
And so I was going to cut and paste and respond to all of them. But anyway, I think ours works sufficiently and saves us money not housing everybody that, that comes through our system. I mean, you just, you can't afford to house everybody that comes through the system. And once they get thrown in jail, they lose their job and then they become unproductive and then they just fall into a repeat cycle. But anyway, I'm sure that they're just opposed and obviously, other states have done this and wasted millions of dollars and so...
I just, I never did get the gist of the email. I didn't know what to do. If it's Bondsman that are, bail Bondsman that are sending these or what, or how they even got our emails about it, so what they wanted us to do.
I think they just bombarded probably all the counties.
Okay, well, the next thing that I got that I didn't really understand either was the decision on the Ameren thing. Larry, you're here. So the way I read it, there is a decision made, probably closer to what Ameren wanted.
Real close to what they wanted. Eighty thousand dollars.
It was between what we wanted and what they wanted, but a hell of a lot closer to what they wanted.
Yeah, we're going to have to agree.
Sorry.
So...
But the decision was only...
Do we need to have another, probably close session meeting to decide what we want to do? Or is this, the way I was reading it is we can appeal the appeal to the appeal and appeal again.
Well, it still has, from what I understand, a pretty lengthy process to go through. Maureen Monahan, who's the commission's, State Tax Commission's attorney, was the hearing officer. She made the determination that Ameren would be assessed at twenty-five million some hundred dollars. They were originally assessed at fifty-three million. So they're reducing their, they're giving them depreciation for over, a little over twenty-eight million. So if the five hundred and sixty thousand dollars we're holding, we're going to give back, or five eighty maybe, we're going to give back four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But after Maureen's determination, it's got to go back to the, to the State Tax Commission commissioners for their approval. Then as I understand, it's got to go back to the courts for their approval.
And that's just for the one year?
That's just for twenty thirteen.
But that's kind of what sets precedent for the rest of them afterwards is...
I would imagine and, and the differences going forward, actually, it's probably going to be more because they, depreciation has increased each of those years.
Well, for old, for old stuff.
For old stuff.
Right. But did she, did she set out a depreciation schedule for them to depreciate new stuff that they're putting in the ground or...
I don't know. None of the exhibits were attached.
I see.
So I'm, I'm assuming that might be in the exhibits that were attached. I know, you know, this, this comes in at like forty-seven percent of what they were originally praised for. I know in some of the letters I received when I asked Ameren to break, break theirs down, the letter came out saying, like last year, I think it was sixty-three percent is what they were wanting it reduced by. So obviously, they have increased that amount as the time has gone on.
I mean, you said there was some meeting, assessor's meeting in St. Louis on Friday or something?
Yeah, the information that I got was that Reed, is that the attorney?
Dick Reed.
Dick Reed is holding a meeting on Friday for assessors and attorneys at the Drury Inn, I think, in St. Louis or... Now, I don't know if Chris Estes received that notice. I would assume he has, but probably would have to ask somebody over there if they intend to attend or if he's asked John Ruth to attend or...
So obviously, we're not getting a lot of communication from the assessor's office and yet we're being required to make the decisions on whether we move forward with contracting with Dick Reed or Sansucci or whatever. And so, you know, at some point, we'll have to have other conversations with the school districts and all the taxing entities as to how we want to proceed. But I mean, I think it'd be important for us to have somebody go to that meeting and either, you know, record it or take notes or whatever and just so that we know what's going on. Because we have, what, twenty-three percent of the combined lawsuit? And our percentage will probably continue to go up as some of these other smaller counties have settled, um, more recent years. Like, a lot of them have settled and will probably settle after this decision, so...
And evidently, Ameren feels pretty emboldened by the decision because they did go after Boone County in twenty eighteen, but that has been dismissed because they didn't file in a protest in a timely manner. But they have already filed for twenty nineteen, so...
I don't know. What do you guys think? I mean, I just think that we need more information and obviously, we're not getting any information from Chris or the assessor's office and so...
The only, the only thing I read in here that we could do is appeal something through something or another. And then is that going to help besides prolong it, which we've been waiting for this to come down? If it is what it is, you know, whether you agree with it or not, we can, we can fight it and keep going for ten more years if we want to, but it's just, I don't think so makes sense. I mean, it's, I guess...
Keep spending money.
Unless there's more clarification and we're not, I'm not understanding it. But I appreciate the emails keeping us involved on the other ones too. Jill said there's some, so it's just, there's no pictures, so reading it sucks.
Well, John Ruth is our...
I understand.
Is the attorney representing Chris, right?
No, Dick Reed is representing all the assessors.
Yeah.
John has simply been a local liaison attorney for them. But they, the joint defense with Dick Reed is for all the assessors. So John is being paid by Chris as a local liaison to help out whatever Dick Reed needs in Cole County. He's kind of kept it informed, but...
Or do we think that we could contact Dick Reed and have him to send us an overview of the meeting?
I think that would be the best, Chris, because you're going to get some arguments there that this is an attorney's line of opportunity.
Right.
And...
And that could come through you though, right?
Well, I'm not, I'm not their attorney. Dick Reed is.
Right, but he's, he's representing Cole County. He's not, right. So he's, in essence, our attorney.
Chris is Chris's attorney.
He's our attorney?
Well...
We're, we're paying him, right? We signed the contract.
You're appropriating the money to pay him. I'm just saying legally, the defendants are the assessors. Just like when Wheeler gets sued for something that happens at the jail. It's against the sheriff and not, the county's not a named party. And what they, what they're looking for here is injunctive relief, which means they're getting sued and they want the courts to make the assessors do something. And what they're trying to make them do is change the depreciation. And it just so happens that it affects money, but that's why, that's why they are the defendants.
So when they send the bill, who pays for it? Does that come out of the, does that come out of the assessment fund?
Uh, it could.
We all are paying it out of that, yeah.
And then when they run out, then where does it come from?
I don't know.
Then it's going to come from General, so I think he's representing us.
Well, what's your decision?
Chris's name is on here, but it also says Cole County, so...
Assessor of Cole County is what that means.
Right, but when he gets sued, we pay the bill.
Sure, you get to decide what you're paying for.
And when the sheriff gets sued, we pay the bill. And so they don't have their own insurance.
I just think Reed can send us information and if he wants to send it through you, that's fine.
And I can email him and ask him and tell him that you all are wanting more information.
Is it going to cost us four hundred and fifty dollars per email?
I'm sure they're taking notes anyway, so, I mean, I wouldn't think, but...
I'd like to ask a question. It's going to be a two hundred dollar question, not a four hundred dollar question?
Okay, you asked your question.
Okay.
So basically, can we ask Dick Reed after this meeting this weekend to let us know?
We can always ask.
Well, I think we just let him know ahead of time that we'd like a summary of what was discussed and, you know...
I don't know how long we want to keep doing this. I really, so I think we probably do, after this, probably do need to meet with the schools and...
I'm not so much as, much worried about Dick Reed as I was about the witnesses.
Sansucci.
Oh my God, yeah. As long as we're not asking them questions. They sat up here and told us, you know, this was, we're going to win this thing and then...
Well, surely they did.
So they gave us a little refund since they apparently didn't do their job?
Yeah.
No? Seven no. All right. So what we can do to find out some more information, what our options are, if we need ever?
So Jill's going to call Dick Reed and ask him...
I'm going to send him an email and tell him that we've got that opinion and the commissioners realize there's a meeting Friday and they would like, if possible, to have a recap of any discussion or decisions. And he may very well reply back to me. That's all privileged. I can't share. And I, we need to...
It's all right. Keep sending us bills.
Well, you know, what it says, we need to ask Estes. And of course, you know, if, say if Larry were the defendant, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion because he would be forthcoming and inclusive on all of this.
Well, then just letting him know if he needed on the agenda for Larry.
Yeah, let us know what his response is.
Okay.
If he says it has, has to go through us, just tell him to, don't bother to send any more bills. Yeah.
I'm about ready, I'm about ready to just hang it up. I'm just...
We don't even have, and Kristen, you can speak to this. We don't have any current contract with Sansucci. And we don't have last year's contract. The not to exceed amount was insufficient and to my knowledge, you have not paid him anything beyond that amount?
Right.
So we don't have a current contract with Dick Reed?
No, we do with Dick Reed. We do not with George Sansucci.
Yeah, right. Okay. You got any other thing else you want to talk about?
I got a thing about that VW trust thing. Do we have anything that qualifies for that? That five million dollar settlement or whatever? And John Glavine, San Jose County was applying for some of it for one of their trucks or something, but I didn't understand how that worked because the way I understood it, it wasn't a Volkswagen, what they got, but they were eligible for some of the money. And I don't know much about it.
When did you talk to John Glavine?
He's my best friend. He was up at the, it's our waste manager, district board meeting and then with council meeting that night too, so... And then I think, oh, Buffalo Barb, is it Barb Buffalo? For City of Columbia, they were trying to get some money too, but I thought, well, maybe they do have some Volkswagen trucks or something, so...
So is that a lawsuit on Volkswagen stuff?
Yeah, it's with their admissions or something that they were slightly going around.
They falsified.
Yeah.
Diesel.
So I didn't know if there's anything we were eligible for on that. See, I got some emails about support visits coming up, but...
Right.
I haven't looked at any of those. What kind are those? Those is regular ports or those slackwater ports or...
Um, I haven't really researched that either. I mean, so obviously, I don't know if you saw, um...
I saw one that named, there was two of them and I haven't had a chance to...
Yeah, so it was, uh, Kansas City, Brunswick and... Yeah, so it was Kansas City, Brunswick, and St. Joe. And so, obviously, there was a, oh, there was a presentation, did I send you guys that, from Roger Fisher that he saw or something? But Port Kansas City was looking to spend, oh, like $615 million to get their port going, and it had a pretty short timeline. I mean, they were looking to start doing stuff this year. I don't know where their funding's coming from, but, anyway, I was kind of surprised at that. But that all came from Roger's visit down to Louisiana or something, where American Patriot Holdings was given some type of presentation, so.
I don't remember seeing that, if you guys should go to me again.
Okay.
I probably, see, we got a meeting that day. I'm not gonna reschedule it for this. We've been to several port meetings ourselves, which we invited the port commission to come to. Someone made it, someone didn't. There's someone set up this recently and scheduled for what, June?
June 4th.
Fourth.
Yeah, so if we're gonna have a meeting that day, I'll have to, so whatever you guys want to do, but.
We can keep it a light, light one, or we can move it to Thursday if you're gonna go to this.
I'm not gonna be able to go because that's Sheriff's barbecue, and I always go out and work that, so.
Let me know what y'all find out. If it's something, I can go up later and look at stuff.
Right.
I think the, I don't even know if these are slackwater harbors or what they're looking at here.
I know Port, I know Port KC wasn't, and I don't think Brunswick is either. Brunswick's a private port. It's actually not a port authority. It's just a, it's a similar port to, they call it a port. I mean, it's similar to Capital Sand or a lot of the places that just use stuff along the river, so.
I think you need to go at least gear.
That's fine.
I would reschedule.
So, they're not even a port. They're just, they park them kind of like Capital Sand has them when they're across the river?
Yeah, they just, yeah, they, they park out of the current and along the bank, so.
Bless you.
And I don't think St. Joe's a slackwater harbor either, so.
Bless you.
So, can they give us a overview of when they have their meetings, too, for the port authorities? Because I've not seen minutes or anything from them at all.
Okay.
And I actually requested that they record them, but since I'm just county money and they don't get as much, I guess they don't let me do that. If it was something else, I'm sure they would do it.
Right.
St. Joe's, is the other one, St. Joe's the port authority?
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, I don't think, you might be able to find something on the Brunswick port, but it's, it's basically a big, I think it's a big soybean port, one of the largest in the state. Um, so, there was this pay form for Mary Ann as Chris's new chief deputy, and so, obviously, that, that's in line with the chief deputy's starting pay. Is that kind of?
Well, I think there was a pay form that came through that had the pay, but not the title.
Yeah, now he's, now he's still on title.
So, now it has the title? Congratulations. What the fuck is that?
So, this is our beans. Yeah, okay. Fine with that.
Yeah.
But we could move our meeting that week, because I think you ought to go.
Yeah, try to attend. I'll take a look at the agenda.
Yeah. Are we gonna do a little bit of the agenda or something?
June 4th. Anything else?
I'm still trying to find, so the Brunswick, it's New Brunswick Port Authority?
Yeah. Well, I don't, I don't think they're a port authority. I think it's a private port.
So, now what can I do on a private port?
No. This is a group of ag, an ag group or whatever, that basically is trying to get their products to market. And evidently, they're in the heart of farm country, and so, they've got a, I don't know if it's a, you know, everybody's got a share in it or whatever, but, you know, has some investment in it, and they take all their stuff there and.
Kind of like MFA parks up bars over Capital Sand already, so why would they want to be involved with the port authority then? I mean, that's questions I've been asking some of them that are associated with it, and I don't know if they're talking, you know, nobody's talking to them about it a whole lot either. We don't have any, we don't have any private.
And so, that's what, that's what this next group is, that Masbita Grant's supposed to focus on is, is going out and making those contacts and actually talking with those people and, and seeing if there's interest or not. And so, obviously, you know, either there was some great big farmer in New Brunswick that wanted to try to take his soybeans to, to market and, and cut out the MFAs and all the other people, and he got enough other big farmers to say, yeah, let's do it, so.
Right now with the tariff side.
So, just another side note, we do have the biodiesel tank set out of Public Works, and so.
You're gonna try it again?
Doing it on a trial basis, so we talked about.
Oh, I thought y'all didn't like them. Didn't like them with what they do to the motors and have them switch it out over the winter time and stuff?
Previously, they're claiming when we met with them that there's not the issues that they used to have, and that's what we're gonna try to figure out.
Yeah, and I thought that's what they said about a year ago, and so, now y'all decided to go ahead and try it?
Well, it's been, the last time we used it's probably been in excess of five years.
No, but the last time we talked to somebody involved with it said that it does not have the issues that it has in the winter time, so you can usually run it.
Yeah, we're gonna try and correct it on our existing vehicles and see what happens.
MoDOT's currently using it. Yeah, MoDOT's using B-20.
No, I mean, that's, I'm not a problem with that. I just didn't know when y'all decided to do that, because I know we talked to, I think it might have been when I talked to Gary that he said that they don't have near the issues, and so, he really wanted to, you know, try to push it again. I basically told him, say, talk to you all and see.
We're in the process of installing and tagging stuff where we can try it, and we're gonna see, you know, if, in the past, we, we had issues. What we don't want to do is try and switch over B-20, and that does cause new issues, but you can send ambulance service fuels out there with us, as well as our own trucks in the winter time, but we're gonna see, see how it goes.
Yep, we're gonna try it on a couple of vehicles and then see how it goes, so.
Okay. I hadn't really heard anything about that, so I didn't know who decided that. I just.
It sounds like Highway 50's gonna be busier next year, too, because they're, when Dave Sylvester is saying it's gonna be three and a half to eight hours delay on I-70 because of the Rocheport Bridge, 50's gonna be, it's gonna be.
Fifty and 8.4, 36 up north will be huge block. Kind of like the initial report they did last night, people complaining that, you know, it's gonna cause a problem. Well, in my opinion, they should have thought about that, but we voted on that last tax deal, so.
Yeah.
So, should I put a limited agenda on June 4th?
Yeah, good.
Put a limited agenda on all of them.
Hey, we don't have any closed sessions today, so.
Well, it's pretty early yet, so.
Yeah, I know. Have anything else?
I was just gonna do some emails and things.
Oh, okay, okay.
The legislative report came through, too, and I didn't see anything on there for the assignment over the land for the port, so I imagine that, didn't happen, saw that was in the paper.
Yeah, none of, none of the land conveyance got done.
So, you don't have to wear a motorcycle helmet, though?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They changed that one? I didn't hear about that.
Yeah.
It's always you have health insurance.
Hasn't been signed yet.
So, now, aside showing your driver's license when you get pulled over, you have to show your health insurance card.
Good luck with that.
And then the premiums of those carriers will start asking you to drive a motorcycle.
And your medical, medical marijuana card, too?
Yeah. I'm sure the insurance also said if you were not wearing a helmet, we're not covering it. We let the rest of the state cover your health expenses when you're laying there vegetated state for not wearing a helmet. I don't know what's, I don't know why anybody would do that, but I've done crazy stuff, so.
No.
And almost everybody here have been married, so. They're all a little crazy. Some of us more than others. Pitches it up all the way, and I was like, there you go, Larry.
I do need some dates and who we're gonna interview, and how many we're gonna interview for the HR consulting.
Oh, goodness.
Stuff, so, and who you want to be doing the interview, so we can keep that process running. So, we just need some data, and whether you want to shorten that group of who does the phone interviews down, which would probably be fast, but it's up to you.
Okay. Let's try to get that to Debbie so that we can keep moving on that. Anything else? Maybe we stay in recess till 4:30?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.